Turn it over to Mr. Holmes.
All right, good evening everyone. If you don't mind, I want us to just have a moment of silence before we get into our agenda. I want us to have a moment of silence for Rebecca, better known as Becca Haas. She's a kindergarten paraprof at Mollin Road Elementary. And I had the pleasure to, you know, spend time with her and get to know her. She was tragically killed in an accident, so just an untimely death. And something that the family is really having to deal with this difficult time. So if you don't mind, before we start, let's have a moment of silence for her. Amen. Lord God, the great architect of this universe benefactor. Father God, we thank you right now for this opportunity. We thank you for this time. And Father God, we pray that you use us for the benefit of all those concerned. Father God, we continue to pray for our children. We continue to pray for our staff. We continue to pray for our community. And Father God, we pray that you continue to show us grace and mercy. Father God, continue to lead, guide, and direct us to make good decisions on behalf of all those concerned in our school system. Lord God, we ask right now that you direct us as we go through this agenda. And Father God, let us do it decent and in order. And it's in Jesus' name we do pray. Let everybody heart say amen. Let's pledge allegiance in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and evergreen, eternal.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. All right, at this time, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Brown for our school system announcements.
Vice Chairman Dawes, thank you so much for the opportunity to introduce our student scholar. She is a rising senior at V. Griffin High School. She, as we prepare our scholars to be college and career-ready, Ms. Jordan Silas has three schools that she's interested in attending upon graduation from Griffin High School. Clark Atlanta University, North Carolina A&amp;T, and Georgia State. So we know, Jordan, that one of those, those are all great schools, and we know that you will make the best choice. So ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, children of all ages, I'd like to invite scholar Jordan Silas to the front to give our district announcements.
Chapel and McDonald, members of board, and Superintendent Simmons. My name is Jordan Silas. I'm a student at Griffin High School. And I would like to thank the Board of Education for involving scholars of the district in the policy and legislative process. The announcements for the July 12, 2022 Board of Education meeting are as follows. Wednesday, July 20, 2022, through Friday, July 22, 2022, new hire orientation will take place at Griffin High School from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. On Wednesday, July 27, 2022, the GSCS education celebration will be held at Oak Hill Baptist Church on 100 Lakeside Drive, Williamson, Georgia 30292, beginning at 8:00 a.m. On Thursday, July 28, 2022, Griffin Spalding County Open House will be held at all schools from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. On August 1, 2022, GSCS will hold a parent services family fair at two timeframes, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. and from 1:30 p.m. to 4:30 p.m., both at the parent services building of the central office located at 234 East Taylor Street, Griffin, Georgia. Wednesday, August 3, will be the first day of the school system for the Griffin Spalding County school system. Governance team, cabinet members, and stakeholders, this concludes the Board of Education announcements for Tuesday, July 12, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you so much, Jordan.
Ms. Barbara Joe, if I can turn recognition over to you.
2022 Girls Golf Last Word, Individual State Championship. It's a date to say in the following words.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would like to call up Ms. Kaylee Crawford and her family.
Thank you, said family.
Thank you. On behalf of GHSA and Spalding High School, I would like to present this trophy to this Kaylee Crawford for this place of excellency in pursuing her goal, which was to win the state championship, the individual state championship for the girls golf. Congratulations, Miss Kaylee Crawford. And she's the daughter of one of our employees, it's an actor brother.
And the father of a great brother. He's the little boy of Mew Croft. Ms. Cook, if you don't mind, I made the mistake. I went and congratulated her brother. I thought he was the winner. And they're like, no, she's the winner. And I'm like, oh, I can imagine how that household is right about now. His sister won the state championship. And he told me that he's gonna get it next year, ain't that right? All right.
Congratulations. This is quite an honor for you and for our system. We look forward to hearing great things from you as you continue your golf journey. Keep up the great work. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. We'll move then into public comments. And we have Ms. Shawanda Dukes, I believe, signed up for public comment.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Shawanda Dukes, a native resident, but regular. But I am a teacher in this system, and I've been in this system for a long time. And I just wanted to come and share some of my thoughts and concerns after listening to the last board meeting about teachers leaving. I teach at Cowan Road Middle School. I've been there since 2017 before that I was at Moore Elementary under Dr. Martha Taylor. And some things that Ms. Ballard talked about was teacher leaving, which this has been a last year was a rough year. And one thing that I think that we need to do is be more proactive. By that I mean, at Cowan Middle, because that's the only school I can talk about, we had so many teachers that left in the last year and a month. When teachers started leaving, I think that there should have been a meeting with the staff to see what was the problem, to see what we could do. That never took place. So teachers leave because they get burned out. Too much is put on them. It's like the plate gets full when you get one thing off and something else is just added on. And then teachers feel unvalued. They feel unappreciated. They're not taught to like an adult. So I think we have to be proactive in that as we move forward. Because it's not what you say is how you say it. Also, input, teachers need more input because we're there, we're doing it, and we really need the input. Discipline, we need to get our hands on discipline because it's not consistent. And when there's a discipline problem, then that adds on to the learning environment. And then the staff, what's gonna happen this year? I met a school that most of the teachers left. So where is that gonna leave us? If the teachers that stay, because we don't get any incentive for staying, no retention pay, no anything. Money's not about everything, but when you're treated right and you're respected, you're not worried about the next thousand dollars in the next calendar. You'll stay here and you'll work. But my thing is, what's gonna happen next year? Will we have to teach more than one subject? What's gonna happen? You know, we have coaches. Will the coaches be used to go in those positions that haven't been filled? Because their content area. So if I teach math and I have to teach science or social studies, whatever, language, then that's not fair to me nor the students. Because how effective will I be with trying to get two main standards, two main curriculum done and make sure the RCDs, the standards are done? So will we start to get me overwhelmed and stressed? Because when people get overwhelmed like me, I get quiet and I don't do anything. I shut down. So we have to look at that. And we have to see what can we do to help teachers to stay committed and love to come to work and not don't want to come to work. This will be my 27th year this year. I love Mrs. Spalding. I want to do what's best. But I think, teachers, we just need to be more proactive. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, we'll move on to the adoption of our agenda. We have a minor change. We would like to move executive session to the very next thing when we give the break to allow guests to leave. It'll be just a short session, an executive session. So with that change, I would entertain a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Four oh. All right, thank you very much. Those that are here and need to slip out, now is a great time. I would entertain then a motion to actually go into executive session at this time for the purpose of hiring personnel.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion. And a second. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And we will move directly over to our floor conference room over there. Be back in just a minute.
Mr. Chair, I formally make a motion for us to accept the consent agenda item as presented.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Be four oh. All right, we are moving then to our action items. I think Mr. Bruce Ballard is first with our track installation at Atkinson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hope everyone's doing well today.
Yes, sir.
I'm here today to present to you an item we've discussed several times in the past. It's a little track we have been looking to put in up at, over at Atkinson. They had originally looked at trying to get a grant to fund a good bit of this project. And that did not pan out. And so we went back and looked at some other options as what we could do to move this forward. And so we did go back, was able to work it out and get some pricing and be able to provide this project with splashboard funding for the project money we still had available in the funding there. We did take three bids, or received three bids. We actually asked for a few more, but we received bids and got back what we feel was a good option and a good plan to move forward. With that, we're looking at a actual concrete base. So it'll be like a, almost like a concrete sidewalk with the potential to put a rubberized surface on that. With that, would be two different contractors doing the work. But it was, actually came up to be the lowest price and going that option. We end up going that way. There was one other option that actually used an aggregate base as opposed to a concrete base, but it's not quite as durable and because of the way the site has a grade there and it has drainage across it, we feel the concrete will be better, so we're glad it worked out that way. And with that, we are still working with, of course, there on break at Atkinson, the ladies we were dealing with to kind of review this and go over. So we didn't want to finalize it with them when they get back just to go ahead with the rubberized surfacing and that. I feel that they probably would want to do that. That portion of the project would be $13,500. And then the complete amount, if we do that and the concrete work, would be $36,850, which is the recommended maximum not to exceed to move forward with this in the way that they decide best at Atkinson.
Board members, yeah, Ms. Brown?
Before we take a vote, just wanted to make a comment as it relates to this particular project. I learned about this project, I heard about it when I first joined the board in 2019. But when I was recently, forgot about it myself. But when I was recently over at Atkinson Elementary School, Dr. Parker, the PE coach, came to me and asked me about this particular project. And immediately I got on the phone and called Mr. Ballard to see what needed to happen and how we could move forward with this. And so I just want to say that I am happy that this project has finally been prioritized as it will benefit the scholars over at Atkinson. But I think the teachers will be excited because it can be an outdoor classroom for them. I've heard from several people as I, you know, put on social media that this was an item that was gonna be on the agenda and so teachers were excited about it. Not only a space for physical education, but like I said, in addition, it will provide a safe enclosed space for students and teachers who will also be able to benefit from the track and have access if they wish to walk, workout in the afternoons. I think one of the things to continue in that process of being able to beautify that part of the campus is we look into getting some picnic tables out there. Maybe there are some organizations in our community that could sponsor more of a static-looking outdoor classroom so that different activities can happen because learning becomes fun when you're outside. And every school in our district deserves the opportunity to be beautified. And I want to make sure that all schools are equitably serviced based upon their needs. And so just to the superintendent and to the staff, thank you so much for prioritizing this project in District 1. And I would like to go ahead and make a motion.
All right, board members, if there's no other questions, we have a motion on the table.
Let me ask, make sure I'm clear on the location. It is north, just north of the gym, behind the gym, is where you're on the.
No, sir, it's actually up on the front corner there, at the southwest corner of the building. So it's right there at the intersection of Atkinson and.
Oh, at the end, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got you.
It's already fenced, an area that's fenced in. It's where there used to be those, a few old homes there in the past. We were able to get that from the county several years ago.
Okay, okay, great, 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 great. Okay, thank you, Ms. Ballard.
All right, motion. I have a second. Any discussion, further discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Be four oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Dr. Taylor, our Class Link license?
All right, good afternoon, board.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And so I am here to present on behalf of Lonnie Harper, our Director of Technology. And so the technology department seeks to purchase Class Link licenses in the amount of $37,220. And so currently, our students use multiple apps throughout the school day. And so Class Link is a single sign-on for our students. And so when students log into Google, that will allow them to be signed into the various apps without signing into each one of them. Recently, we had a cybersecurity audit. And one of the findings in the audit was that we needed to move to a cloud hosted account. And so moving away from Clever that we use in the past to Class Link, it will not only satisfy our students being able to use a single sign-on method, but also it will allow us to meet that finding of the cybersecurity audit by Class Link being a cloud host as well. One additional point that I would like to add is that two of the main programs that we use in finance is Macaleer. And then we also use Infinite Campus. And so Class Link will also create all those user accounts and sync for us. So at this time, it is recommended that the Griffin Spalding Board of Education approve the purchase of Class Link for an amount not to exceed $37,220 to be paid through the instructional technology budget.
Okay, board members, any questions? I would then entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Four oh.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Mr. Wheeler, our food service management software.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair, Vice Chairman Dawes.
Good afternoon.
Superintendent, Dr. Simmons, the board.
Mr. Wheeler, go ahead with the announcement.
The student nutrition department, as you will hear with other departments, are needing to upgrade its software, food service management software. This was an investment made by the district in 2016. This product, this company, and this is a continuation on it. Many of the products that you've been using in the past, like Slona for your, for our free reduced applications, Meal Pay Plus, this is just a continuation of it. This software that we have now, Horizon One Source, is a server-based software. And in our current situation, we don't have touchscreens for our cashiers to use. So this new version, and it's not, it's been tested in the market. It has been used in various large districts like Fulton County and some of the neighboring counties. So the software, the actual command system of it, is what our managers are already trained on. So the implementation processes will be a lot simpler than where we are. So the Griffin Spalding County Students Nutrition Department is seeking approval for the upgrade of the food service management software. Horizon One Source is obsolete, and they have moved into Horizon HST, which is simply the cloud-based software of the same food service management, I meant, management software. The funds for the upgrade will come from the school nutrition budget. All right, so as I was saying, the current software is, will be supported until we are able to implement the new HST software. So they're gonna run the parallels to work out any communication issues that we have. All of our current functions with Infinite Campus and all that upgrades from the State Department, that all should be flow smoothly because this is basically the same language. The cost of the software for this upgrade is $39,185 at this time. And when I put that, this memo together, that was as of July 1. The software companies are increasing prices as of July 1, but we've sent a commitment later to them that once approved by the board that we would sign into the agreement. So the purpose of the requests for the Griffin Spalding County School Board is that they approve the upgrade of this, upgrade hospital software.
Board members, any question? All right, I would entertain a motion then.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I second Ms. Wheeler for the purpose of that project that you and I talked about. I didn't want to make sure we're on the same page.
I'm sure that had to do with food. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Four zero. Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. All right, Mr. Charles Kelly, our idea fund for contracted special ed paras for year 2023.
Good evening, Superintendent Simmons, Vice Chairman Dawes, board. Tonight, I'm coming to speak to you concerning a request for contracted special education pair professional positions for school year 2223 utilizing IDA funds. The Department of Exceptional Students is requesting approval to contract six district special education pair professional positions for the 2022-23 school year to address current pair professional vacancies. The district currently has nine. The memo that you have up there says 12, but at this point, we have nine vacancies, unfilled special education pair professional vacancies as of right now. The estimated cost of the contracted services would be $226,800. And again, that's paid through IDA funds. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the request to contract six district pair professional positions for the 2022-23 school year utilizing IDA funds. If you have any questions, if you have to answer.
Board members, any question? I would then entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. No discussion, all in favor, signify by raising your hand. Four zero. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. And I think we're on again.
And I'm also here to speak about contracted services for adaptive PE. So the Department of Exceptional Students is requesting to enter into a new contracted services agreement with a service provider in the area of adaptive physical education to provide individualized education program services to students with disabilities utilizing IDA federal funds. A little background on adaptive PE. So adaptive physical education is instruction in physical education that is designed on an individual basis to meet the needs of a child with a disability. It is a direct service written into the individualized education program of students that require the service to access the PE curriculum. It's generally students that have pretty significant needs. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve for the district to enter into a contracted service agreement with a service provider in the area of adaptive physical education to provide individualized education program services to students with disabilities utilizing IDA federal funds.
And so previously, this has been an employee?
So previously, this position did not exist. So some students went into PE. Most of the time, for these students, the teachers themselves tried to do some type of physical activities with them. So now this would be a dedicated person that has specialized training to be able to provide those services.
Okay, any further question? Any further question? Board members, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. No further discussion, all in favor, signify by raising your hand. Be four zero.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Dr. Greer, our Math Reading Fluency?
Good evening, board and Superintendent Simmons. My first request seeks the approval to purchase the NWEA Math Reading Fluency Assessments for twenty-nine thousand, eighty-five dollars from general funds. As a district, we have used Maps since the twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen school year, and we did recently renew the contract for math reading growth for ELA in math. We are seeking to supplement that contract by adding math reading fluency. Math reading fluency is an adaptive universal screening and progress monitoring assessment for grades PK through five. It will be used as a, as a replacement for Fanta Sempernel, which we all know as F and P, and it will be used to gather data on oral reading fluency, literal comprehension, and foundational reading skills. It will also be used to assess characteristics for dyslexia, which is a requirement under Senate Bill forty-eight. Although Senate Bill forty-eight is not going to play until the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we will be able to meet this mandate once we purchase math reading fluency and continue to implement it in the classrooms. In conversations with teachers and leaders, the biggest area of concern for our current program, which is F and P, is the instructional time that is taken to implement the test. It takes anywhere from three to four weeks of instructional time to assess every single student. We will be able to minimize that time to one to two days to assess every student with transition into math reading fluency. So it is recommended that the Griffin Spalding Board of Education approves the purchase of the NWEA Math Reading Fluency for twenty-nine thousand, eighty-five dollars from general funds. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Bell. Go ahead, Leader, no, you go ahead.
Thank you, Eric.
Agent for beauty.
Thank you, Leader Holmes, uh, it's more of a statement, um, being that we've used Maps since twenty-sixteen, and anything that we can do, um, you know, I remember being at the Caplin hearing about Senate Bill forty-eight and sitting in that committee. And so I am confident that this is the right mode to address foundational and reading needs of our scholars. Uh, this adaptive universal screening and progress monitoring assessment would definitely equip our teachers with the right data and adequately support student growth at this foundational level, and I look forward to the improved student outcomes as a result of this intervention. Always just looking to see what the data supports. Um, and so as we get ready to use the program, just, uh, I'll be looking forward to an update to see how it has supported, um, the growth of our students and how our teachers are enjoying it as well. Thank you so much.
I, I just wanted to ask, um, the question, Dr. Greer, what, what did we do before? It, it was a mandate, uh, for us to, um, once we, uh, identify someone with, uh, dyslexia.
So of course, we have the process for MTSS, and we are able to provide supports and interventions along the way, but because we were not mandated, it was really done on an ASME basis, it's still being done on an ASME basis, not necessarily being done for every single student. That mandate requires us to put something in place for every single student in that grade band.
Okay. And my question is, I heard you say that the, um, Fanta Sempernel was three to four weeks of implementation and working, and we're moving to one to two days.
Yes.
Does that mean that we are taking a little bit off the plate of teachers?
I would definitely say so, um, and speaking with teachers and leaders for the elementary school, they do feel like it's taking, um, some time that they have dedicated to individually testing students, it's putting that back, um, where it goes back to instruction.
Awesome. I see two elementary principals. Ms. Chambers, what can you tell the board about this transition?
We got three, Gavin's the principal now.
Oh, I, I was looking in that direction. I see a brand new elementary principal. I'm looking now in your direction. Would, would either of you be willing to share with the board where you believe this transition would be supportive of, one, more time spent teaching the curriculum as opposed to assessing, and two, this effort to do more with less? Either of you willing to speak to that? Okay, as the air conditioner just went off.
Fontis Sempernel, the teachers have to administer that individually to the students. So each student in the class, that has to be done, it's a pretty, I mean, it's a pretty lengthy process. Um, students have to read those questions, um, it's also a degree of tagged subjective, um, which we have, which is why sometimes you see if the data might match up to what MAPS says, a kid, where they're reading at, so for, I know for us, I, I feel like it's gonna give us more fidelity with our kids actually being leveled, but it's also something that they can be tested online. So the kids, everybody's taking their own test online, the teacher's not having to sit and record as the kid reads. So whereas, you know, it would take some time, three weeks to get your, get your class F and P, um, we can do that sort of thing, and I think we're gonna have more fidelity, you know, for me.
I would just add to that, you start talking about us, one thing to student achievement, as a teacher being able to teach children. And so when you start talking about the, giving back to teachers to teach the children, you know, that's gonna have a great impact on the student. We're excited about that.
As a principal who wasn't a teacher, who administered F and P, it would need three and four passages to build a student. Start with one, pass that, to the next, to the next, until you found that structure up, and this is gonna be able to do it. In conjunction with Math Read, Math, oh, we're done in three, four days, all.
And I think what's, um, important to note is that these same students already take math growth. So we're just adding an extra fifteen or twenty minutes on to that test, and it's not another test that's gonna be drawn out over the course of the first month of school.
Thank you for the feedback.
Thank you.
Board members, any? I would then entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. No discussion, all in favor, signify by raising your hand. Four zero. And you can continue right on.
Thank you.
Kickoff.
Foundation models. The second request seeks the approval to purchase the Kickoff Foundation Module and Services in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars from general funds. The Kickoff software is a comprehensive, comprehensive online hub for educated growth that includes three modules, professional learning, foundations, and growth. We recently, during this past school year, utilized the professional learning module, and we used it specifically to organize district-wide and school-based professional learning and gather participants' feedback on those professional learning items. As we transition to the new school year, we're looking to add the foundations module. The foundations module will provide coaching and feedback to classroom teachers, plus allow leaders to conduct learning walks to determine the progress of teaching and learning at all levels. District leaders, school leaders, and instructional coaches will be able to use the foundations module to, to, um, conduct the coaching and feedback cycle, plus provide private support to classroom teachers. We are using a phase-in approach with the foundations module. We will first look at it from the teaching and learning side, but we are also transitioning some of those forms for new teachers through HR, as well as some of the supports for PBIS and SEL through our Student Services Division. We're looking to transition all of the departments to using the foundations module for that coaching feedback. The superintendent recommends that the Griffin Spalding Board of Education approves the purchase of the Kickoff Foundations Module and Services in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars in general funds. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, so who on your team is gonna, uh, roll this out, Dr. Greer?
So of, of course, it's our division, the teacher and leader effectiveness division, with Dr. Taylor being our executive director. We have the executive officers as well, which are three of them. We have all of the principals, elementary, middle, and high. We have the coordinators of each of the content areas and the instructional coaches at all of our schools.
Okay, and what will be the role of the professional, the Director of Professional Development, which is gonna be housed out of HR, what will be their role in the-
Very good question. So we have three, three models, professional learning, foundations, and growth. HR will be responsible for the professional learning module. Teacher and leader effectiveness will be responsible for the foundations module. Under professional learning, that is all of the district level and school-based professional learning, all of that will flow from HR, and all of the classroom walkthroughs, coaching with feedback will fall, will fall from the, um, foundations module.
Okay, and how will the data be used to support teachers in becoming better?
Very good question. So the classroom teachers will be eventually able to solicit support, and we will also be able to triangulate the data. So if you picture a teacher who may be struggling with questioning, we've gone into that teacher's classroom several times, and we've assessed questioning, we've uploaded the feedback in the module, in the portal for Kickoff. That teacher will then be able to participate in professional learning in the area of questioning. And we will be able to triangulate that data to see, has that teacher been receiving support from the instructional coach? So not only are they able to receive feedback, they're able to receive coaching and support from the coach, and then participate in professional learning, and we're able to triangulate that data to make sure that if a teacher has exhibited a concern, that we have diagnosed it, and we have given or taken the necessary steps to ensure that we provide that support.
When, when you're not seeing that, when does that become punitive?
Let me make sure I understand your question, when I'm not seeing what?
The, the support or the improvement on the teacher's end?
It doesn't become punitive from my side of the house, because of course, you still have the teacher evaluation system.
Correct.
I think it's more punitive on that side. We're about support and making sure that we provide coaching. It's not punitive whatsoever.
Okay, all right, and then, all right, so you answered that, someone in the district who will monitor, and talked about how it would be helpful, talked about how the support, how the feedback would be used. All right, and so how will, and I guess just answer this again, how will teaching and learning and HR collaborate with the program, to use the program?
We will collaborate, right now, we are already on a Kickoff team, because we have all been using the professional learning side of the house.
Okay.
As we transition in the foundations module, the walkthrough forms that, um, our new teachers use through, um, the new teacher induction program, the leader induction program, all of those forms and support forms, coaching forms, feedback forms, we will be able to place in foundations module. Keep in mind, we've only been using professional learning module for registration and to make sure that people can see their transcripts for professional learning. Now, all of the ongoing feedback will be able to be in one place from all of the divisions, but we're just gonna roll it out a little slowly.
No further question?
I, I wanted to ask, you, you know, um, I was just sitting here thinking, I know that's a dangerous thing. I was sitting here thinking, um, how do we assess, um, the uses? And I guess there's probably more of a caution to our IT guys, but how do we assess the benefits of these software programs? Do we get any data, any feedback from those that we procure the software from? Do they, do they, uh, is that included in the purpose?
And we're able to conduct, um, our own evaluations as well, just by, um, collecting data sources to include just usage of platforms and whether or not the platforms are, um, doing exactly what they said to do, if you will. So of course, we have our Department of Research Evaluation Accountability, and through that department, this past school year, we were able to evaluate some of, um, what we were doing in Kickoff. So we do have some of that data though.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Holmes, if I may, uh, you may remember last winter, maybe, um, I asked the board to allow me to purchase a program called Glimpse K-12 Analytics. And so, um, Barbara Austin and her team are working with, uh, that company. We are downloading all of the metrics now, uh, and what it does is it gives us back what we call an academic return on the investment, so to what the, so yes, sir, we, we have the means of doing that both in-house as well as through analytics.
Any other questions, board members?
Nope.
Okay, but here none, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Four oh. All right, and Dr. Greer, we'll let you do one more.
Yes, thank you.
You're spending all the money.
This last request is actually, um, coming on behalf of the Coordinator of Mathematics, and that is the purchase of ETA Hand-to-Mind Math Resource Kits. The superintendent seeks to purchase the, or seeks to gain the approval for us to purchase from general funds, thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, eighty-four cents, the kits to support elementary and middle school with daily numeracy skills. Through the use of the Hands-on Standards Daily Problem Solving Kits, the virtual math task kits, as well as virtual manipulatives, students will be able to rewrite, speak, and solve, leading to improved student performance in mathematics. The Hands-on Standards Daily Problem Solving Kits is a supplemental resource that provides problem-solving routines for daily instruction, and within this kit, you have five different problem types. The virtual daily math task kits use open-ended tasks and manipulatives to apply deep conceptual understanding to real-life challenges and defend math problem solving and reasoning. And lastly, the math, the daily math task kits challenge student thinking while encouraging multiple solutions, enables teachers to identify student thinking and solve problems, and incorporate hands-on using those virtual manipulatives and use the rich math facts. Each elementary and middle school will receive a site license for the virtual manipulatives. And I will say, we were able to throw the high schools in there as well, so they will have full access to the virtual manipulatives. But the elementary and middle schools also receive either a problem-solving kit or a math task kit for each math teacher in the department. The superintendent recommends that the Griffin Spalding Board of Education approves the purchase of ETA Hand-to-Mind Resources in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-four cents from general funds to support elementary and middle schools with daily numeracy skills. Any questions?
You know, I'm, I'm gonna ask this question, um, maybe, maybe something has changed, and I'm, I'm, I probably already know the answer, but I, 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 when I see these, I see we have to buy site licenses. In this case, you know, we're having to buy nineteen. Is, is there any kind of way, um, you know, where the license can be, uh, bought for the district instead of having to be each individual, uh, site?
In essence, it is for the district, it is for the district, we just wanna make sure that every, um, school has enough to, to have the, um, the math teachers for every teacher in that school to be able to access it. So it is essential, one license for the district, that all math teachers be able to use.
So, so what you're saying, just like with, probably only buy one, example I can think of, like buying a TurboTax, you know, any, every, you, you may have, okay, buy, that's happened, you may buy, you know what I'm saying, you may buy a TurboTax, but each user, you have, you have to pay for each person that, so that, that pretty much in essence-
We have a site license, because as, um, you know, was maybe suggested earlier, we know that we may have just on average six math teachers, but if one math teacher leaves at some point during the school year, that mean that license for that person has been used. With a site license, it's accessible for everybody in the building, no matter how many people may be in that building.
Okay, all right. That's, I'm glad you asked that question, Leader, because that was one of my questions about each school needing its own individual license. And so the second question to follow up from your response to Leader Holmes would be, how, I know it's virtual, so how will the kits be distributed? Is it one per classroom, how does that work?
So with the virtual kits, you know- So with the virtual kits, you know that we've recently purchased the school-based panels. So with the virtual kits, they will be able to manipulate the manipulatives through the panel. The actual other kits, which are the problem-solving kits or the math task kits, those are tangible items that the teachers will receive. So they will receive enough for a class set, not for every single child. If you think about the average middle school teacher, he or she may have three different segments or five segments of twenty to twenty-five children. It's for one class, or a class set, if you will.
And supporting this, because it's a great program, but when you think about our strategy map on student achievement is to implement a coherent and viable curriculum and to provide engaging, high-quality instruction. So it does all of those things, as well as prepare them to be college and career-ready. So thank you for that. And then also, if you're looking at not only strategic plan, look at strategic plan in the areas of student performance and appropriate support, it does that as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Any other board members have questions? We'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Motion. So moved.
A second.
I've made the motion.
Second, Mr. Holmes. Make sure our bookkeeping got all that.
Tighten up.
No further discussion, all in favor, signify by raising your hand. All right, four oh. Thank you, Dr. Greer.
Thank you.
All right, next, we're going to go into our appointment for legal counsel. Board members, you know that this time of year has been when we have typically done that. We know that we have received word that Mr. Shepherd is not superhuman, going to work all of his life, and that there may be a time within the next six months that he may give us a date that he is retiring. So good for him. He is not there now. He's just not able to be here this evening. And what we, our discussion then was continuing with, help me, Smith, Welch, and...
Smith.
Yeah, everything that she just said. Continue with the services. There are ten to fourteen lawyers that are within that, other than Tim Shepherd, that have school law experience and specify it in different areas even. So, and our thought then is to get it off of the middle of the year and move it to January. And so we are looking to extend this appointment for legal counsel from now until the end of the year, and then putting out an RFP that is going to be asking for those requests from that point on, and we will then renew it from January of the year on an annual basis. So with that being said, I would entertain a motion for the appointment of our legal counsel.
Before we do that, Mr. Chair, I would like to make this comment. So during this transition period, I want to be very clear, and I want to make sure that during this transition period, that Mr. Shepherd gets with Smith, Welch, Webber White, and share the things that we put in place as it relates to the amount of hours being put into a particular case, once it's reached a certain dollar amount, being able to come back before the Board in order to give us that update to determine how we're going to move forward in that. And so I just want to make sure that during that transition period, that all those things are shared with the firm, so that there are no ifs, and buts, or questions about how the Board is directing legal counsel to move forward in this process.
Very good. Very good.
And just to that point, if there are any attorneys that are out there, the RFP is already out, and it is to be received by Wednesday, August thirty-first. And if you have any questions, you can contact our Chief Financial Officer, who will be able to answer those questions for you.
All right. So with any other comments?
Sure.
If not, I would then entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, I agree with the motion that we extend the appointment for legal counsel, and we begin in January with the RFP.
With the new one, so this will go through at the end of the year?
Right.
Okay. Any? So I have a motion?
So moved.
That was a motion, Mr. Barbara Joe is the second. Any discussion for clarity or anything in that? Everybody good?
None good.
Okay. All in favor, then, signify by raising your right hand. All right, four oh. And then next, I will turn it over to Superintendent Simmons for our Director of Mainstay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, board members, it is with pleasure this evening, as you know, we have, Mr. Thiago Alexia has moved on, and so we have a vacancy for the Director of the Mainstay Academy position. Interviews were completed a few weeks back, and prior to giving you the recommendation, I want to share with you a little bit of the qualifications, if you would. Mr. Craig Whedon possesses more than twenty years of experience in special education settings, with sixteen of those years being in an administrative role. Mr. Whedon joined the Griffin Spalding County School System back in two thousand and four. Prior to joining Griffin Spalding, he had stints in Lamar County, as well as Indiana and Florida. Mr. Whedon currently serves as the Assistant Director of Mainstay Academy. He's also previously served as the Interim Director of Mainstay Academy. Mr. Whedon possesses a master's degree from Purdue University, as well as a Director of Special Education Licensor from Indiana University. Having said that, it is the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Mr. Craig Whedon to be the Director of Mainstay Academy for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
All right, board members, any questions? I would then entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Be four oh. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I believe we have gotten to the end of our evening, and so, what is it, summertime?
Summertime.
What's the summertime? That's okay, we won't ask you to say, Mr. Brown, I mean, Mr. Holmes. With that, though, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Mr. Brown has made the motion, and second by Mr. Holmes, and we're all in favor, four zero all night long. Sorry to Miss Sue McDonald, if she was not able to actually get on, we were working on that throughout that, but hopefully we will get that squared away. And looking forward to a new school year quickly approaching. So God bless y'all, and have a wonderful evening.